Zoom, I'm not sure I know how to change it in Cisco WebEx, though. I'll look around.
That's all right. I figured out your secret. All right, so we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order, and I'm sure that Terry is there and getting us all sorted, as always, so that we can broadcast. So, this board meeting of the Board of Education for August 25th, 2020, is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being streamed live on PPT, PPS TV Services website and on panel 28, and will be played throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. All right, welcome and thank you for joining us this evening, everyone. I'm having a hard time believing that summer is already winding down and that our teachers are coming back to work this week in preparation to welcome our students on September 2nd. We're going to get another update on reentry, and I know we're all anxiously awaiting that. Many of us have questions about what it's going to look like for students, and I know that my sophomore at Cleveland High School is anxiously awaiting her schedule. But before we get to reentry, we're going to begin with the board consent agenda. Board members, are there any items you would like to pull to set aside for discussion to vote on at the end of meeting? So are there any items to pull from the consent agenda tonight?
So just a quick question, is the resolution around the preschool measure, is that part of the consent agenda, or has that been added somewhere else in the agenda? Or is that a separate item?
That will be separate than the consent agenda.
Where is that going to be on the agenda?
It is. It will be right after the consent agenda.
Okay, so I have three contracts I'd like to pull and ask questions about at the end of the meeting.
Okay, great. Which of the three contracts are those, Director Brim Edwards?
Open School, Immigrant and Refugee Community Organization, and the I Am Academy.
Okay, so we will need to pull those from the consent agenda. Are there any other items that board members would like to pull from the consent agenda? During none, I'm going to double check so that we have those resolution numbers correct. So we're pulling 6-1, 6-2, but not all of the contracts in 6-1, 6-2. Liz, how do we clarify that to make sure it's clear which contracts we're voting on and which ones we are not?
So the three contracts identified by Director Brim Edwards have been removed from the consent agenda. Do you can recite the resolutions and 6-1, 6-2 as amended?
Okay, great.
And include the others that are in their original form?
I'm actually going to have one question about the catapult one, but it's just one question, so I can, you can let that one go. Just ask the question.
So we're just pulling the three that you've listed, Open School, I Am Academy, and ERCO, correct?
Correct.
So then, so Liz, do we need to move, amend the resolution, or is Director Brim Edwards' request sufficient?
Her request is sufficient.
Excellent, okay. Ms. Fretschaw, are there any other changes to the consent agenda?
No.
All right. Do I have a motion and second to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I thought that so moved was Michelle, but was it Amy?
Yes.
Okay, I'm like, I don't think Michelle's here, but I'm trying to hear voices of our speakers. So Director Konstantin and Director Brim Edwards, seconds. Is there any board discussion on the consent agenda?
So I just have one question, and I don't know if this is for Deputy Superintendent Hertz or Emily Courtney with contracts, but it's about the contract term for the catapult learning.
Do you want to include that in your questions at the end of the Is that okay?
Yeah, happy to do that.
Okay. Are there any other board discussion on the consent agenda? All right, the board will now vote on Resolution 6-1, 6-2 as amended to 6-1, 6-4. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 Indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? The consent agenda is approved by a vote of six to zero with Student Representative Shu voting.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Nathaniel. All right, now we're going to move on to the item that Director Brim Edwards referenced that Director Moore has requested some time to bring to the agenda. Director Moore, would you like to introduce your item?
Yes, thank you. I would like to offer a resolution to endorse the measure on the November ballot that will establish a voluntary program of high-quality, tuition-free, universal preschool for all children in Multnomah County ages three to five. Early childhood education fosters a range of early skills, including cognitive skills, social emotional development, and executive functions that are foundational for success in K-12 and into adulthood. Research over many decades has convincingly shown that participation in high-quality, developmentally appropriate preschool programs has a positive impact on all children, and especially for children of color and children living in poverty. But preschool has been out of reach for the majority of children in this county because of high costs and limited capacity. Oregon ranks fourth in the United States for the cost of childcare, and it's not unusual for families to pay upwards of 30% to 40% of their monthly income for preschool, even if they can find it. There's been capacity to serve only about 43% of the children in Multnomah County, and in the aftermath of COVID, that capacity is expected to be substantially less. This ballot measure will support the development of a diverse network of preschool programs, program options, over the next five years, prioritizing support for families who historically have had the least access to preschool, including BIPOC families, families of children with disabilities, families who speak languages other than English, and who are experiencing poverty and economic challenges. Moreover, in addition to preschool's clear benefits and better educational outcomes for children, public investments in universal high-quality preschool have been shown to be one of the most effective economic development strategies, with a return of almost $8 to $10 on every dollar invested. High-quality universal preschool is an infrastructure for families that allows parents to safely and securely participate in the economy and sets children up for educational success into adulthood. I think this program could unlock enormous potential for children and families, and it's directly linked to PPS's success in fulfilling its core educational mission. So I am asking my colleagues to vote to endorse this ballot measure.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll bring forward the resolution with a motion, and then we can have discussion on what Director Moore has brought to us. So the board will now bring forward Resolution Number 6165, Resolution in Support of a Ballot Measure Establishing Universal Preschool in Multnomah County. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Director Moore moves, and Director Bailey seconds this motion. Is there any board discussion?
Hi, this is Director Konstant. My only discussion is I sent a note to Director Scott today asking him in his role as the head of the Intergovernmental Relations Committee to really codify how we're going to go, what kind of process we're going to use for endorsing measures. We've talked about this for a while, but we haven't we haven't really set up a process, and these things always seem to come to us hastily, and they're brought to the board without deliberation and without criteria about, you know, whether or not we should or should not be weighing in. So if the Intergovernmental Committee could spend a little time just creating some parameters around that, I think that would be helpful for us, and I support this measure.
This is Director Brim Edwards. So I think that's a great suggestion. I also think we should have some sort of process by which resolutions get added, so this board members found out about it last night, at least I did. And I believe our process was that anything that we were going to be voting on needed to be part of the board packet that went out and posted on Thursday, so just again, getting some sort of established process, so it's not a sort of random activity. And just also letting the public know that we're going to, you know, agenda, that anything we vote on should all be posted on Thursday or at least, you know, 24 hours in advance. So I actually had a question, and I'm not sure, Director Moore, if you're the person to ask, or if it's Courtney Westling. And the question I have is, and I haven't been following this. I was following the preschool for all measure and had a pretty fair amount of engagement with Commissioner Jessica Vega Peterson, but there was another measure that qualified for the ballot, and I'm looking at the Multnomah County website, and it's not clear. There's two other measures. There was a reference to universal preschool, which makes it sound like not the one that the county referred. Rather, it's the one that the students were talking for, so I'm wondering, like, are there two measures going to the ballot, and what are the differences, and what is it that we're voting in support of?
So there were two ballot measures that, two measures that qualified for the ballot. One was sponsored by the county, one was sponsored by, I believe, Democratic Socialists of America. And there were substantial conversations of, over quite a long time between the two groups in an attempt to come to some sort of agreement to avoid having two competing ballot measures around the same topic. And just recently, a couple of weeks ago, they announced that they have merged, and there will be only one ballot measure on the ballot for preschool. They are, they're working on paperwork right now, so my understanding is that there will be, right now, there is no ballot measure number that is assigned, but it will be, I'm told it will be next week. And therefore, there will be only one measure on the November ballot for preschool.
And what, which measure is it? They were had some universal, well, they had some commonalities, there also were some
It's essentially the county measure.
Okay. Great. So I'd like to just capture that in the in the board discussion, that that's what we're, since we don't have a number yet, nor do we have the language. Thank you, Director Moore.
Any further discussion on this resolution?
Yeah, sure, Larry. Yeah, no, I appreciate the comments from both Director Brim Edwards and Director Konstant. I think it's a good topic for the Intergovernmental Committee to discuss in terms of criteria, and what is a board we should be looking for in terms of this. And I also agree on the timing, you know, I think unfortunately sometimes things do come up last minute. This, I think Director Moore would agree that we would have loved to, you know, have known about this and had a little bit more time. I also personally think it's an incredibly important issue, and, you know, in this case, even though I would have rather had a little bit more time to see the resolution and discuss it, I think, given the deadlines in terms of endorsement, I also think it's really important that we take a stand and talk about this. And I think this is the kind of thing that will have a really clear impact on our goals as a district, on our student outcome-focused goals. And so that's why for me, it's a really important issue and one that I'm happy to put my support behind.
So I actually had a question also for the superintendent. I think Superintendent Guro, you were on the county task force, or some of the early discussions around the preschool for all. And I'm wondering how you see the interplay between the early learning money that was in the Student Success Act and this piece? Same, different, complementary?
I did have an opportunity to be a part of some of the early preschool for all task force meetings. As I know, a lot of our early education team was. The one thing that I think all stakeholders around the table, whether you're school district in Portland, or community partner out there, also providing services or interested in expanding services, there was very broad consensus about the benefit of increasing that access, coming to agreement around quality standards for that experience, and the value of the investment in encouraging kindergarten readiness. So as the superintendent, I can't be anything but supportive of efforts to make sure that every child has access and equity to high-quality early education. I'm thankful that Student Success Act set aside a priority in early learning. We know that even with those monies and our ability to deploy some level of head start seats, that there's still a much greater need than even those funds can, you know, are helpful in opening up access. So I'm supportive. I'm supportive of that investment sort of going into early education, knowing that many of those four-year-olds, in most cases, are going to be enrolling in PPS. So I think it is a complimentary investment, that dedicated resource.
All right, any further discussion before we can move on to voting?
Yeah, just one more thing. This is going to be a huge step forward for children in Multnomah County. Part of the measure is raising wages for the workers, which they are notoriously poorly paid. So it's a win on any number of fronts, and I'm glad we're in a position to endorse it.
All right, the board will now vote on Resolution 6165. Do I have, I guess we've already moved and seconded, so we just need to vote. So this is a resolution in support of a ballot measure establishing universal preschool in Multnomah County. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? I don't know if that was an abstention or just static, so we'll just go with that it was static. Resolution 6165 is approved by a vote of six to zero with Student Representative Shu voting.
Yes.
All right, thank you all. We'll turn now to our student and public comment. Before we begin, I would like to review our guidelines for comment. The board, of course, thanks the community for taking the time to attend the meeting and provide your perspectives. Public input informs our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen. Board members and the superintendent will not respond to comments or questions during public comment, but our board office will follow up on any board-related issues raised during public testimony. We do request that any complaints about individual employees be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have any additional materials or items you would like to provide to the board or superintendent, we ask that you email them to publiccomment.pps.net. Please make sure when you begin your comment that you clearly state your name and spell your last name. You will have three minutes to speak, and you will hear a sound after the three minutes, which means that it is time to conclude your comments. Ms. Fretschaw, do we have anyone signed up for student comment this evening?
Yes. We'll start with Rio Briggs.
Rio, are you there? Rio Briggs? All right, Ms. Fretschaw, I see Rio is here on WebEx and is unmuted, but I'm not hearing them. Do we, let's see if we can get them connected somehow. While we're doing that, can we move on to another student who was here to comment?
Yes, we don't have another student, but we do have two members of the public. Deb Meyer.
All right, Deb.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I'm not too loud. So superintendent, members of the board, my name is Deb Meyer, M-A-Y-E-R. I'm an education advocate and a member of 5G Free Oregon. I'm here to address two issues, food security and families, for families, and the safe use of technology. PPS can deliver good food and lessons to students. I'm proposing that we employ bus drivers and teaching assistants to literally deliver education to PPS students. Pardon me?
I understand. I just made it so you don't have to do it.
Number one, delivering meals to students who would ordinarily be eating at school at is the least that we can do. Feeding kids good food is the most effective intervention to improving learning. Currently, limited food delivery is available to some students. We're proposing that PPS make daily deliveries to every family that wants. Number two, you may recall that I advocated for Senate Bill 283 last year while running for PPS School Board. I took a lot of heat for that. But the bill brought attention to harmful health effects of Wi-Fi radiation and wireless devices on kids. The bill passed unanimously. The law directed the Oregon Health Authority to produce a meta-analysis of studies on the topic. That report was due out in July, but it has been postponed. So what we want to do is to let you know a little bit about it today. And we are in so what are some of the health effects that the Wi-Fi radiation has on kids? One, cancer, changes in the DNA, damage to the immune system, infertility, addiction, dizziness, nausea, headaches, fatigue, eye problems, sleep disturbances, and memory problems. So since kids are being asked to spend much more time with Wi-Fi and screen devices, we want to inform parents now. We're proposing that students be provided with composition notebooks, lessons, and books so that they have an alternative to online learning. Then even students without internet can be able to complete assignments and communicate with teachers on a regular basis. There is something intrinsically satisfying about such a system. We're not asking that virtual education be terminated, only that everyone is aware of the risk and knows how to use the devices and Wi-Fi safely. To recap, we're asking that bus drivers and staffers deliver good food and education materials to all elementary students for health, for healthy and safe learning at home. We know of another school district doing this, and it is working. For lack of a better analogy, we are in a better call-sol moment. We need to fix this. We can start by telling parents and families about the harmful effects of Wi-Fi radiation and screen devices, and we're asking that you inform the families. So for more information, you can visit us at 5G Oregon Free and Parents Across America Oregon.
All right, thank you for your testimony. Let's see if we can get Rio Briggs back. Rio, are you there? Ms. Fretschaw, could you unmute them? Hi, Rio, are you there? All right, Ms. Fretschaw, you said we had another public commenter?
Yes. We have Joshua Lacroute.
Okay, let's hear from Joshua, and then we'll try Rio one more time, and hopefully they will be there then. Joshua, welcome.
All right, Joshua, there we go. Yes, hi there. Thank you for your time. My name is Joshua Lacroute, L-A-C-R-O-U-T-E, and I am talking about equity and technology for the upcoming school year. There we go. So I have a few questions and comments about the readiness of every student for online learning. And I know that you can't answer the questions, but these aren't rhetorical, so at some point I do hope that I do get a response for these. Do you know if every student in PPS has access to a computer and the internet? Did you conduct a phone or paper mail survey? Some families don't have internet access, so sending an email or having the survey online for others would be difficult, to say the least. In short, what I'm asking, is every student ready? Because of COVID-19 and the need for online schooling, has PPS increased the technology budget by reallocating funds from other areas so your department can fill the demand and be successful? What added technology services are going to be given to children with physical, intellectual, and/or emotional challenges? This goes for IEP 504s, English as a Second Language. Will one-on-one teaching for children that do need actual physical presence, will that be available? Will those educators be tested for COVID, and will the student and family be tested for COVID to assure safety? Also, I'm looking to find out the status of the student success funding to support tutors for BIPOC students. So I hope that that would be addressed very soon. I'm presuming that all fall sports practices and games have been canceled, so how were the funds for the athletic departments used to bolster and enhance academics? There was a speaker at the last board meeting that mentioned that schedules, particularly for high school students, were made so they could help their younger siblings on their schoolwork. My question is why? Some would retort, "Well, it takes a village to help raise a child." But older siblings should not, I repeat, not be burdened with teaching a younger sibling. It diminishes the older sibling's time to concentrate on their own education, period. Also, earlier this week, I read an email from PPS that there were going to be home classroom kits that were going to be available. Quote, "The home classroom kits will be sold directly to families and who have financial resources, while PPS is identifying additional resources to cover the costs for families who are not able to afford them." Why is public education suddenly a pay-to-play system? Even if you're gifting it to another family, these kits should be free to any and all students, full stop. A lot has been mentioned about student equity, but the example above and the allocation of funds in the community really show the opposite at times. BIPOC and special education students are still not receiving everything that they need to. They are receiving less funds and opportunities. This is your opportunity to show how equitable you can be, and it needs to happen now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to try to connect with Rio one more time. I hope you're there. We'd love to hear from you. So Ms. Fretschaw, would you unmute Rio, and we'll see if they are ready to speak?
Hello, this is Rio's mother. She got stage fright, so we will have her write her concerns and email them to you.
Totally understandable. It's really hard to speak in front of people for many folks, and especially online can be challenging, and then in this environment with so many And then in this environment with so many, um, adults. So Rio, thank you for your passion and your willingness to, to want to speak. And I really look forward to your comments that you'll share with us in writing. So thank you. Again, thanks to everyone who spoke tonight. Um, it, it takes a lot to be willing to sign up and to care. Um, know that you can connect with our board managers, with our pal, if you have something specifically you want to follow up with the board office. All right, Nathaniel, would you like to provide us with your report this evening?
Uh, yes, I would. Thank you. Um, just one quick note, I've had fire alarms going off randomly, so sorry if that happens. Um, anyway, um, I really don't have much to report on, um, today. I imagine that by next meeting, at which time, of course, school will be back in session, these reports will be significantly more substantive. Uh, for now, I'd just like to note that the DSC and I are currently working on the DSC and Student Representative Board Policy, 1.20.012P, and that, um, we are currently in the process of onboarding new members in that regard. Uh, cool. Right, um, well, um, I think that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Nathaniel. Um, we turn now to Superintendent Guerrero. Um, what would you like to share with us tonight, Superintendent?
I echo, I can get a little anxious speaking to a large group of adults sometimes. Uh, good evening, directors, uh, staff colleagues, and good evening to everyone who's tuned in and, and watching on our live stream. Uh, as you know, tonight's meeting agenda takes us a little less of a page than the usual, uh, with the major focus being on the start of the school year plan. So my report this evening really is mainly going to serve as an introduction to this evening's staff presentation, which, uh, we hope will provide directors and the broader community an update on our plans for students, uh, and also as a message, uh, for the broader community, uh, particularly during this fluid and dynamic reality and constraints under which, uh, we're attempting to operate. So by the time the board comes together again for a regular meeting, uh, the 2021 school year will have begun. Uh, everyone across our district, uh, teachers, administrators, central office staff, uh, they're continuing to prepare for what we're referring to as our soft start next Wednesday. Uh, next slide, please. This school year will begin differently, of course. Uh, it won't begin the way we would all prefer, uh, with open doors and, uh, excited students, uh, full classrooms. Uh, but we are doing, we are working to make, to do our best to make a successful launch. Uh, a launch that's engaging and supportive, uh, of a learning experience for our students as, as we can make. And, uh, next slide, we know that, uh, part of, of making sure that learning experience, uh, exists for our students is that we pay careful attention to those questions of access and equity that were brought up earlier, and that supports are, are made available. We're going to hear some of the details of a growing list of, of supports, uh, that will continue to be messaged, uh, to families. There's many challenges that have been brought on by this pandemic. Uh, we recognize, especially for students and families of color, who have been disproportionately impact, uh, impacted. Uh, and the reason why we're spending some deliberate time and energy, uh, so that we're, we can be as helpful as we can be, uh, in as many ways possible. We're very thankful of the focus groups, particularly for many of our families in communities of color, uh, who, who have learned inputs. The soft start that I mentioned, uh, because of that concern for our students' well-being, we'll be focused on our educators building those connections with our students. As you know, these are new classes, uh, they hadn't been together before, uh, which is a bit different from the springtime when campuses closed. Uh, so there'll be, uh, more attention to orienting our students and families. Uh, we are dedicating topics for professional development with our educators, who are coming back this week, uh, in, in helping them, uh, with guidance and giving them opportunities to exchange ideas with one another regarding how to really welcome and, and meet our new students, how to engage with them academically and virtually, how to get comfortable with those digital resources and the platform they will be relying on. Um, but I will reiterate, uh, many plans are under, underway for providing more support services to students and families than ever before. Uh, we've certainly ramped up our social emotional supports. Uh, you'll hear a bit later, uh, how we're, uh, partnering with our culture-specific partners to provide, uh, some deeper levels of family engagement, to promote that student learning and support, uh, with a focus on reducing the institutional barriers for families of color, uh, and advocate for their needs. Uh, the partners are, will also be providing some important wraparound services, which include academic tutoring, extended learning, enrichments, and programming, uh, to provide that cultural identity development that matters now, especially, particularly during racial uprising, uh, that they were, that we're feeling. Um, and a lot of this is possible, it's important to underline and appreciate, is our student investment, uh, account resources at work. That includes 55 additional social workers and counselors that I can't think of a better time, uh, for them to come aboard. I think we've, we're down to the last handful, uh, of openings. So really appreciative to HR and our school leaders, uh, and our Student Support Services Office, uh, for identifying those professionals, uh, to start connecting with our kids. Uh, we've also, we're also staying close with our, our, our local partners, including Moatloma County, uh, to make sure that we're collaborating and doing everything possible to connect with families, uh, and services that may be available to them, including with housing assistance and medical care. Uh, we're continuing to think about the nutrition of our students. Over 1.2 million meals, uh, have been served since we closed school buildings. I feel like we need a sign outside, uh, the DSC maybe. Uh, we're gonna resume meal distributions at exponentially more sites, uh, than we've done over the last five months. Uh, thank you to our nutrition service workers, who have proved to be very essential. Um, and regarding the question of, you know, have we shifted significant resources? Absolutely. Particularly millions in ensuring technology access and equity has taken place. Uh, to make sure folks know what to do with that hardware and that connectivity, uh, we've stood up a technology help desk for families to get questions answered. They can dial in, uh, and get acquainted with the learning platforms and, and, and get assistance with, with, uh, how to use it, uh, effectively, so that our students, uh, are properly set up and comfortable. Um, the help desk, uh, like the virtual orientation content we're publishing this week, uh, is accessible in all PPS-supported languages. Uh, so we welcome any additional feedback and input as that help desk, uh, comes online for, for our parents. So just a few mentions, uh, honorable mentions on a, on a growing full list of supports being made available, and, uh, will continue to be advertised at the school level as well. Uh, we'll also be describing that array of services at pps.net, uh, by the end of the week. Looking ahead, um, next slide, I know that for all the plans, uh, that we've made, there's still many more questions. We have them, I know our families have them. Uh, we will get to some of your questions, uh, this evening in just a few moments. Uh, we may not have every answer, this is an iterative process. Uh, Friday evening, we were coming to conclusion in a few areas. So, uh, we're more prepared, uh, today now to talk about specific schedules, for instance, uh, which I know everybody's anxious to hear more details about, uh, but this is an iterative process. Uh, we are making adjustments, uh, particularly after, uh, working and hearing, uh, from our school leaders, our educators, and, and certainly will continue to make adjustments, uh, as we hear from students and families as the school year gets underway. Uh, so we understand that, uh, and many of these questions are the same ones that other districts are contending with, uh, both across the state and across the country, as we connect with our colleagues. Uh, they're contending with these same challenges. Uh, you see a variety of responses and approaches, and frankly, a, a variety of impact, uh, on those decisions. So, uh, we have further work to do to clarify plans in certain areas, uh, spoiler, uh, such as, you know, what is that availability of childcare going to look like? What is the prospect of bringing in small groups of students to campuses for some specialized learning support? And what about athletics? So we're working continually on these almost daily, particularly with the Department of Education. We're thankful for their collaboration. Uh, we'll continue to be guided foremost, as we have been from the beginning, uh, by our highest priority, the health and wellness of our students and staff. So stay tuned for an update soon regarding some of these items. If you don't hear a lot of details there, it's because they're still very much, uh, being deliberated. But as the first day of school year approaches, our families should know that we're, we are thinking of those next stages, uh, uh, of work, uh, to implement. Uh, so for when students can be allowed in buildings, uh, whether that's in a hybrid covert model, uh, or we're planning for that eventual and much anticipated day where we can actually just open our doors to all students and staff at once. Uh, so we're also giving thought to what intervention, support opportunities, and enrichments are best going to address those learning gaps and social emotional impacts that this pandemic has wrought. We recognize that. Uh, it's not easy. Uh, this next month, uh, this school year, it won't be easy. Uh, but we will do our best to remain focused on delivering on our educational mission as best we can. Uh, we're here to support our students, uh, to serve them. Uh, we will need everyone's support, thank you board, uh, and, and our broader city, uh, particularly, uh, as we anticipate state budgets are going to get tighter, uh, in the coming months, and certainly in the new biennium, uh, just at a time when our students and our families are going to need more from us. Uh, so we'll continue to be as strategic and efficient as we can be. Moving forward, next slide. So, uh, things may not get easier soon, but they will continually get better. Uh, next week will be better than this week because we're going to see our students. Uh, we'll see their faces. Uh, we'll be better at delivering distance learning to students, uh, because of what we learned this past spring. And we have, we will have had more time, uh, to plan than we did last March, when our educators had very little time to make the switch to online learning. So, uh, one day, hopefully very soon, we'll be inviting our students back to, to seeing them in person, face to face. So things are going to get better. Um, so I want to thank you for, for your patience. Uh, I'm very grateful, uh, to our staff, who have worked tirelessly to get us to this point. I'm grateful for the patience, uh, shown by our families. Uh, we're all navigating something very unprecedented here, uh, in our community. Uh, uh, we appreciate the partnership of our labor partners, whose collaboration has been, uh, essential, especially as plans get underway. Uh, we're, we're as focused as ever, uh, to get through these challenges that we're facing. Uh, we may be virtual here at first, uh, but we are excited for learning to begin once again, uh, in the coming week. Uh, so it's with these opening remarks and, and message to community Chair Lowry, uh, staff's prepared to, to provide our next school opening update. Uh, we've switched it up, so now on the pitcher's mound, coordinating our district efforts is Dr. Russell Brown, uh, our Chief of System Performance. Uh, he'll have, uh, supporting roles this evening, uh, from Danny Ledesma, our Senior Advisor on Racial Equity, our Chief of Schools, Dr. Sean Byrd, and additional staff, who are all playing a critical role. Uh, and certainly everybody's here on screen to take any questions. Uh, we'll do our best to answer as best we can, uh, to provide those details. Uh, we're excited about the learning experience ahead, uh, that our students and our families can expect, and, and, and we're excited to share some of those plans with you this evening.
Let's go for it.
All right, let's go for it. So, uh, with your permission, Chair Lowry, I think Dr. Russell Brown is ready to kick us off.
Good evening. Um, don't wait for the, uh, presentation to be pulled up, please. Perfect. And if we could go to the, the next slide. So, uh, good evening, members of the board, uh, Superintendent Guerrero and members of our larger community that are watching this evening. Um, pleased to have this opportunity to provide an update to the board. Always like it when the, the superintendent steals, uh, the majority of what I'm getting ready to say. It makes it a little easier for me. Uh, it is an ever-evolving, evolving environment, and we're, uh, working to, to, um, respond to it as quickly, uh, and as iteratively as possible to improve the experiences, uh, for our students. Um, throughout our work in, in terms of our response to COVID-19, uh, pandemic, we've consistently centered on our, our theory of action, our planning. And I'm just going to reiterate that, if, if we braid, uh, racial equity and social justice strategies into our instructional core, work with our students, teachers, and content, and build our organizational culture and capacity to create a strong foundation to support every student, then we will reimagine Portland Public Schools to ensure every student, especially our Black and Native students, who experience the greatest barriers, realize the vision of the graduate portrait. And we will continue to, uh, to send our Black and Native students as we move forward throughout this academic year, and as we iterate to, to continue to improve services for our students. In our last update, we, uh, provided an overview of kindergarten registration, our expectations for our, our young learners. Uh, we provided demonstrations of the learning environment, seesaw, and canvas, so that folks would have a, a sense of what, uh, it would be like for students to be in those environments. We provided, uh, a brief overview of scheduling and, uh, a brief overview of planned engagement for our students. Today's presentation, we're, we're going to switch it up a little bit to, to borrow from the superintendent's baseball analogy. Um, and, and we're going to provide, uh, a deeper look at schedules, and, you know, what the day and the life of a student look like, uh, at, at the elementary, middle, and high school level. And also then to, um, what, what does engagement and support look like? And, and again, from a student level, uh, in, in support of, of our students who have additional needs. We're also going to switch up the format a little. Uh, so tonight, we'll start with Dr. Byrd, and Dr. Byrd is going to give a deeper dive into schedules, and then we'll break and have a question and answer session, uh, connected to the schedules. And then after that, then we'll, we'll pivot, and, uh, Danny Ledesma will come and speak about engagement and support, and we'll have a, a Q and A session after that as well. And then we'll move, uh, on to, to closing. So with, with no further ado, uh, if we could go to the next slide, and then I will hand off to, to Dr. Byrd.
All right. Good evening, everyone. To continue the baseball analogy, I guess this is the first inning of the presentation, so if you could switch to the next slide. Uh, we're going to talk about, uh, schedules today. And before I start, I just want to remind everyone, uh, that's, excuse me, watching, that we have two terms that we use a lot that not everybody is familiar with, so asynchronous and synchronous. Those are, uh, terms that you'll hear and you'll see in writing. A synchronous, you can just think of as that as, uh, as live interaction with a teacher, uh, or, uh, some interaction through, through technology, through text messaging, uh, video conferencing, et cetera. And asynchronous is work that students will do, uh, sometimes on their own, sometimes it's independent work, such as, uh, reading a book, writing in a journal, sometimes it's watching, uh, videos online, such as Khan Academy, uh, to help with math, some, some other kinds of apps that we have that students will use. So just want to, uh, remind you of those terms as we go through the schedule. Next slide. So we have, uh, taken feedback since last we were here. If you could flip to the next slide, there you go, thank you. And I just want to just remind us, oh, go back one, sorry. That there are things that we were, uh, firm about, and then there are things that we've given our building leaders flexibility of. So there are certain things that we required, such as, uh, uh, teachers had to have office hours. There have to be supports in place for students so that, uh, that they can access the technology. So we'll talk more about that in a bit. And there, uh, there has to be, um, uh, some element of, of family engagement and in time for teachers to give feedback to students. Well, what is flexible is, uh, the start and end time. So we've heard from families that, you know, we already arranged childcare, uh, we have elementary children, and so we'd like to start at the same time that we start during the regular school year. So we allow that flexibility to our, uh, building leaders. And then we've also told our building leaders that you, we've, uh, you know, here's the box, you need to fit these components in the box. But how you arrange, uh, math and language arts, what time of the day that is, that's up to you as a, as a building leader. But your school needs to be consistent. So if your teachers are going to, if you say that you're going to have, um, second graders are going to have language arts in the morning, then across your school, you need to have second graders have language arts. So it can't be individual, uh, teacher decisions about the structure of that. Um, and then, uh, a reminder that we'll be taking attendance, and I'll talk about how that happens, uh, in a little, in a, just a bit. Next slide. So today, I want to take you through, uh, a couple, a few schedules for each grade level. And I want to, uh, uh, introduce you to a second grader at Harrison Park, a fictional second grader named Maya. And so Maya is a second grade student, and she, uh, if she goes to Harrison Park, she is going to start her day. Uh, we'll just say for, uh, illustrative purposes, at 9:15 in the morning, where she'll, uh, start preparing for the day. She'll have, they'll have their, get their things ready to go, have their breakfast, and be ready to, uh, set up at 9:30 for their social emotional lessons. So in these slides, you see that green highlights, those mean that, that is synchronous instructions, that's the teacher is live and, uh, and delivering instruction. So the teacher will deliver a social emotional lesson in morning meeting from 9:30 to 10:00, and then students will start working on their, uh, language arts and social studies lessons. Now, but here is where, uh, there's some differentiation, because we know it's important that students are, especially young students, are not online all day long, and so we want to be very clear that there are opportunities that students will work independently. That students will work independently and then there are opportunities that students will uh be with the teacher depending on their needs. In Maya's case, Maya has a specific learning disability, so she's she's still striving to read on grade level. So at ten thirty, she's going to be working uh on some, while the rest of the class is working on independent reading and writing tasks, she's going to be working with a special education teacher. Online, so she'll actually be online some additional time to get some additional help. And then she'll join the rest of the class at eleven o'clock to do a small group for uh language arts. And at eleven twenty-five, they'll have another break and they'll do some independent work. Uh in this case, they're going to be doing their uh journal writing for uh their independent reading and journal writing. Then there's going to be a break from the computer completely and they're going to have lunch and a a short uh recess time. Before they dive back in the afternoon to some uh independent math tests. In this case, uh Maya is actually going to be online, she's going to work on Dreambox, which is one of our of the apps that we have. So she's going to go online and do that work uh independently, um and and then uh move into some other uh work. Two o'clock, she's going to have her math small group, so she'll be back online with her uh with her, the rest of her class. And then at two twenty is when we have time for independent math tests, but. In this case, Maya's mom is um working and she's not able to be to uh, you know, sit with Maya at the exactly two twenty to do her independent math test, that's fine. They're actually decided as a family that she's going to do her math work at six o'clock this evening. That's why we have time built into the schedule that's synchronous and then we have some time that's asynchronous, so families have flexibility. In the asynchronous time to do work at their own pace. We do know that some older siblings will be will be uh watching after their younger siblings as their parents are working. Or uh they just have parents at home that are working and uh trying to manage a a lot of things, so we want to have. Building flexibility for for families. You'll notice on this schedule that there's time built in for library, there's also time built in for P E. And uh so every uh elementary school student will have those uh specials classes, as we call them, so arts, uh P E. And um and time in the with the library media specialist. So that is uh uh that's how Maya's Monday and Friday will look and we could go across and you you would see that uh she would have different opportunities to do that, so next schedule. And we're going to move to middle school and we're going to have, I want you to meet Kyrie, who's a seventh grader at Beaumont. Uh Kyrie is uh going to be on Monday, he's going to start school also at nine thirty. Uh he's going to uh have language arts uh in a live, in a synchronous class, uh that's his first period class. So in the morning from nine thirty to twelve fifteen, Kyrie is going to be engaged with his teachers, he's going to follow his his schedule. Uh the first three periods of his schedule, so in in his case, it's language arts, P E and math. Then he's going to have lunch and have a little break from the computer. And while he's in those classes in the morning, language arts and math particularly. He's going to have some opportunities to not just have the teacher talking to him, but the teacher is also going to break them. Uh the class into small groups, collaborative groups, online, so they'll be able to collaborate with one another, because we also know it's important, especially. For middle school kids to to be able to uh talk to their peers, to collaborate with each other. We don't want this to be an isolating event for them, we know that uh, you know, social emotional uh wellness is important and that includes collaboration for students. After lunch, uh Kyrie will go to advisory, his middle school has advisory. Uh and then the afternoon he'll spend on applied learning tests, now that doesn't mean he won't have access to a teacher. He uh may very well need to check in uh with the teacher uh or he. The teachers that have assigned him work in the morning, he may get stuck and need to uh need to have access to some staff member. That will be possible in the afternoon, so it's not that he's done at one forty-five. But again, Kyrie has to look after his younger sibling, so he can't necessarily get all of his work done between the hours of one forty-five. Four, so he'll work on some of that uh later in the evening and and that's that's fine too. And Tuesday, Kyrie will continue his schedule, he'll go to choir for, so this is fourth period class. Uh then he'll go to social studies, fifth period, he'll go to science during sixth period. Have a lunch break, uh he'll be doing, uh he's in a school that has actually a seven period day, so at one forty-five. While schools that have sixth period day will be doing applied learning, he'll actually be in his seventh period class, which is a Spanish class. And then he'll have uh some time for applied learning. Now Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, uh look, will look different for uh every student, so you'll see there that it's all highlighted green, but that's. Uh that's based on the teacher discretion, so in Kyrie's case, he's doing really well in language arts, he um did well with his uh his uh. A set, his applied learning activity that he turned into his teacher. So he's gonna, um he will have an opportunity to drop into office hours if he needs to, but if not, he'll just continue working on his assignments. But his math teacher would actually like to see him in a small group, so. He'll be actually at eleven thirty, he'll be logging on the computer to see his math teacher with some other students. Who are um trying to accelerate in math and there are um, they are trying to uh. Go into algebra by eighth grade, so he's going to be working on some uh some advanced math problems. This, and so the same thing will be true on Thursday, Friday, middle school students will have the opportunity to see all of their teachers if they need to. Otherwise, they'll continue working on their on their um applied learning activities. Um next slide. Now I want you to meet Marcos, who's a tenth grader at Roosevelt High School, a rough rider. He is going to be engaging in um. In the morning, applied learning from eight to nine. And this is um specifically laid out here, teachers will generally be in professional development or they'll have uh time to meet with students. Now, um uh Marcos is, he plays in the band. And he's going to have band first semester, you can see there he has a third period. But he really wants to make sure, his band director really wants to make sure that he is uh keeping up with his, practicing his music and uh making sure that he's he's uh. Keeping up his skills, so we're going to have, he's going to have a chance to meet with his band director uh later. Besides his class, he's going to have a chance to meet with his band director later in the weekend, that'll be throughout the year. So let's just go with his Monday schedule, he's going to have first period Spanish, uh third and fourth period, uh I'm sorry, first period, Spanish, three, four. Then second period he'll have English and these blocks for high school students are a little bit longer, they're seventy-five minutes. Than middle school students, then there'll be a lunch break. Everybody will go to lunch, third and fourth period, third period is band. And fourth period is algebra, so those on Monday, that will be an asynchronous day, so he will either be working on uh practicing his his trumpet. Uh by himself, or he will, um maybe he'll do some uh small group instruction with his band director if. Not, he might have sectional rehearsals on uh on his asynchronous day. Um and algebra, same thing, he may uh do his applied learning or he may uh. Work in small groups if the teacher requires that. In the afternoon, he's going to have a break from three fifteen to three forty-five to to do whatever he needs to do, uh you know. Catch his breath from the day and then he's going to have his club meeting from three thirty to four thirty. So we know it's very important for our our secondary students to be able to again connect with their peers. And we want to make sure that we are running clubs and activities that we would normally run. So Marcos will is is uh is in a club. And then the next day, Tuesday, he will have band live, so he may have practiced his trumpet on uh on. By himself on and or in sectionals on Monday, Tuesday is going to be with the full band. And then fourth period, he's going to have his algebra class live, so whatever he was working on yesterday, he'll be able to uh practice that. And then his first and second period will then be uh will then be asynchronous. And in Marcos' case, uh Spanish, uh he's uh going to be working. He took a quiz on Monday and he didn't do so well. He uh he actually made a D on that quiz, so he's going to be working with his Spanish teacher in a small group for about twenty minutes, just to kind of remediate that. And so that he can uh improve for the next time and maybe do some uh makeup work so that he he can improve his grade. On Wednesday, uh Marcos will actually have the opportunity to see all of his teachers uh for a period of time. Uh there if, then again, that's just like the middle school, it's a teacher discretion, if they need to pull him, so if he needs to do some. Uh more uh intense work in Spanish or English or any of his classes, that he can uh do that with his teacher. Uh and then we have uh. From twelve thirty-five to one fifty, he's going to have office hours for any of his, he'd be able to drop in by appointment to see his teachers uh until uh one forty-five. Afternoon he'll have applied learning and then at three thirty, he's going to have band practice again, because uh Marcos is in symphonic band, we, he really wants to. Uh you know, prepare for when we go back to school and we have have are able to have a concert. And his band is actually going to practice every Wednesday at this time, so teachers that would normally be in a in a um. P L C, the band teacher uh will have some opportunity, it may not be at. This time throughout at the day, but they'll have some opportunity to work with those um groups of students in ensemble groups and in uh. In other um uh classes, Marcos also, he uh, if he were taking, for example, if he were taking an A P uh class. He could also uh use some time either in the morning at eight o'clock in the morning. To do some modules with his A P teacher in the semester that he's not in the class to prepare for the A P exam. Beginning September first, the college board is releasing a bunch of video modules for all the A P courses so that we, because so many schools are going to this uh schedule. So there'll be additional practice that he'll have access to a teacher to help him through that, you can also do those on your own, so depending on what he needed to do. And then Thursday and Friday, we'll repeat that schedule uh that we did on Monday and Tuesday, so there's some continuity of instruction. Next slide, and I want to introduce you to Natasha, she's my last friend tonight. She's a junior at Cleveland High School and she is really dedicated to the I B program. She has really uh decided to go for it and go for the full I B diploma, so we admire her uh her dedication to her studies. So she is uh on a very uh uh, she's on a year-long schedule, eight periods schedule, but there's some modifications to that schedule, so again. From eight to nine, some of her teachers may decide to have some uh groups for I B, uh extra I B practice. Or she may have some other, uh she she's in choir, so she may uh have some time to work with teachers. But she's going to have her first period class, uh similar, uh she's going to have her I B English class, it's going to be live and then she'll have biology, second period, live. And then she'll have lunch, just like the four by four schedule. Then third and fourth period, very similar to the other schedule, she's going to choir, so she's going to be practicing for her solo that she's preparing for. And then she's going to have uh I B math uh in the afternoon. She's also very actively involved, so she's going to have a club meeting in the afternoon, she'll have a chance to do that. The next day, uh she'll go to periods five and six, so she's going to have history and then sixth period she's going to have a I B boost class. Because even as dedicated as Natasha is, we know that these are uh, it's challenging to keep up with. That many academic classes, so we want to give her an opportunity to be in a in I B boost class, which is uh you could think of as sort of a uh. Uh support class for I B students. So she can work on a variety of of topics in that class to prepare for those exams. Uh so that she can score well and get her college credit. Seventh period, she has digital media, so that's an elective that she chose, uh and that's going to be uh. In this case, her teacher's going to call them together for thirty minutes to do some uh group work. Uh they're working on a project, so her group will get together on the platform that we have and work on that. And the eighth period, she has study hall because again, looking, look at her schedule, she got a pretty tough load there, so we want to make sure she has opportunities to. Uh have some time to um, to make sure she's keeping up with everything and has time to check in with teachers if she needs to. On Wednesday, she'll actually see all eight of her teachers if she needs to, so she'll have, there's a short period of time. That the teachers can call kids together uh to drop in, or they can have some structured time with teachers, again, just like in the afternoon. Uh in the four by four schedule, she'll have opportunity for office hours, she'll have some time to work on her projects from Monday and Tuesday, she's got that history. Uh project that's that's coming due, so she'll spend some time on the applied learning. And then in the afternoon, she too is uh an accomplished musician, so she'll be practicing with her choir uh in the afternoon uh. Um on Wednesdays. Then Thursday and Friday, we will uh repeat that all over again. So that is a a view, an overview of schedules, uh thanks for.
It's Chair Lowry, I just wanted to say that it looks like on Thursday. They, it's the sort of the reverse, they have third and fourth period and then first and second, and it looks like there's a typo, it says period three and two, but I think it should be three and four.
Oh.
Do you hear on that?
Yes, you are correct, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I just, I, I have a very interested Cleveland student who's going to ask me lots of questions after this meeting, so I want to make sure I tell her the correct answers.
Yeah, that's right, so we did want to, um yes, so they will have, uh their classes will all be in the morning that are live and then the afternoons will be uh asynchronous. Now, and then I just want to say that's uh in all of these schedules, the times, you know, will follow the the schedule of the school. And principals are now preparing to communicate out to their communities, their exact um schedules, I know they're building. They're 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 uh populating their master schedules, so they will um, they'll be sending those out shortly, I know some schools have started to do the registration process. And that uh is a conclusion of the day in the life of Maya, Kyrie, Marcos and Natasha and many other people just like them. And we'll take your questions down.
All right, let's open it up to board members for questions, um I'm not going to do alphabetical order this time, we'll just see. Uh I would ask that you only ask one question and then allow for another board member to ask a question and then we'll come back to you. So um does anybody have any questions to get us started?
Chief Byrd, this is Director Konstam, um I guess my first question is um. Does, do you expect that office hours take the place of flex? Is that the primary time when students will be able to individually um have have one-on-one time with their high school teachers?
There are actually so several opportunities, that is one of the times they can have one-on-one time, but they're also in the in the asynchronous times. Uh teachers could just have, uh they could say, hey, we're going to have office hours this time while you're working on your applied learning. Those of you who need assistive can come here, but yeah, this, so there's multiple opportunities for kids to do that, but that's the specified time in the schedule that we asked. Uh we asked that there's a specified office hour time. And this is a good chunk of time of that period.
Thank you.
Um I have a question about um the primary grades if we've anticipated. Um a reset time or, I mean. What if we're a month into it, what do we do when we're thirty days into this schedule and we're finding it's not working for families, do we have a plan B for those families?
So, thank you, uh Director, so we are going to be monitoring um schedule and we'll monitor the engagement of students. And uh how individual school principals will be responsible for monitoring um. How uh it's working for families, we do have some supports that Danny's going to talk about in a few minutes that are. Sort of built in to help people, you know, with technology with uh, and we've done some front end work with our, particularly our C S I schools, with our Summer Connections Academy where we've. Done orientation with our families and that is continuing with other schools, we have a, that's the template that we've used, but. Where they've uh sat down with the family and said, you know, this is how it works. I do want to also stress that the asynchronous time is not locked in, you know, we're not going to be calling their, so um, we're not going to be calling uh. Maya's house at uh twelve thirty to make sure she's working on her asynchronous math lesson, you know, she, that is up to her family to figure that out, how that works best for them. What is uh fixed, and it may not be those exact times you just saw on the schedule, but. Teachers will have a routine that we're going to be online every morning at nine, nine, for example, for for our morning meeting and S E L. So those long on times will be fixed, but we we also want to be sensitive that uh, you know, young children cannot uh sit. Even big children like me cannot sit for hours on end in front of a computer, so we just want to be uh sensitive to that, so there, you'll see. That's why the breaks are sort of built into the schedule right there.
Thank you.
But we will monitor and make adjustments as we need to, yeah, to answer your question, I don't think I actually said that, but you, we will make adjustments.
I have a question about printing, um. So I I think uh this. You know, we've got, this will increase, I think, uh the need for printing, a lot of families don't have a printer. Their computer, uh schools notoriously don't have enough budget for paper. Uh a lot of the times, um and so parents and teachers and whoever now throws money at it. Um how can we? Yeah, how are we going to deal with this in the fall so that it's, that printing need is is fully funded and fully met?
Yep.
In terms of getting printed materials out to families and students.
Sure, so we are, do have a, we're developed, it's pretty much developed, but we're putting the final touches on the development of a process for schools to be able to uh print things at the at the school, so if. We do know there are a number of uh teachers that may have the desire to come in and teach from their classrooms, so they'll have access to copy machine, those kind of things that they can print. We can use our bus service to deliver things to um families, uh that the those. Our plans are being finalized, we also have a central uh warehouse, a central print shop that we can print things at, uh and we have a system to uh. You know, uh just as you would do if you you were in school, if a school wants to send a print job, they send it, there's a deadline and it goes out through the, we would deliver it, in this case through bus service. Uh many of our uh, most of the assignments, however, that kids will do will be actually completed online and there are um, there are uh. Mechanisms in the platform to submit your work, you can do, teachers can create assessments online. Uh that are uh, you know, multiple choice kind of assessments in campus, for example, that are actually even auto graded, um so. There, so a lot of that stuff will be handled online, it can be randomized to make sure that students are not getting the exact same uh quiz and, you know, for obvious reasons. But um there will be uh opportunities for most of the work to be submitted will be submitted via uh the technology platform. But we do know there'll still be a need for, certain things will come up and we have uh plans for uh being able to print those those things. And uh disperse them uh through our uh transportation system.
Can I ask a question about the, this is Rita, um about the uh applied learning. Uh at eight A M at the high school level?
Yeah.
Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure, so from eight to nine, that will be, that's time where teachers are either in P L Cs or P D or um, as I mentioned. Uh we wanted to build some more flexibility into our high school schedule so that those two. those students who are involved in AP, AP or band or choir or those ensemble groups that may need to meet some of those teachers that, you know, there's only one band director at a school, so a PLC of one is a bit challenging. So they could be released from that time to work with the band uh on certain days. Other days, they could meet with other band directors of other schools, but that, so there's flexibility in that eight-to-nine o'clock hour. Uh and it's for uh students to, they will do their own, they'll do their own uh work, they'll be, you know, have projects to do throughout the year. It's also time for them to kind of get ready for their day and uh and get set for the, have breakfast, do all those things, and then uh join the class at nine o'clock.
So are they um, is that hour going to be potentially requ- required time for students?
It's it's required, yeah, it is a, it's part of the day for students in that they'll be, it's asynchronous time, so they'll be working on a project, they'll be uh getting either, they could be meet with a small group of, maybe they have a project in social studies, it's a group work. The, and there's three people in the group. Those three students could meet together using our platform uh to um to collaborate or whatever, or they could, or they could just be getting, you know, they could be working on individual work at that time.
Okay.
But again, that's, it doesn't have to be done between eight and nine. That's, that is purposely flexible so that kids that can't do it at that time, maybe they'll do it at I mean, when I was in high school, I did my best work at eleven o'clock at night. That's not great, but maybe that's when they choose to do it.
Ditto. Um yeah, I I I'm just a little concerned that um it it looks on paper like we're moving in the wrong direction um for high school schedules. Um I was hoping that we would be moving later, not earlier. Um but if if this is intended to um intended to be really flex time.
It is, yeah.
Okay.
The actual live class won't start until whenever time that that was on there, yeah. It's a bit later for them.
Okay. I I still, I I'm just gonna say this. Um I'm still concerned that um some schools and some teachers may end up requiring that students be functional at eight AM. And everything we know about physiology for adolescents says that that's problematic.
So so what I can, what I can say with certainty is that no teacher will be requiring a student to log in, because teachers will be engaged in PLCs or professional development. So there will be no uh, there's no instruction that's delivered at eight AM in the morning. Uh unless it's arranged between, you know, like the band or the choir, you know, unless it's something like that, but that's usually happening in the afternoon. We've built time in the afternoon for that schedule. So s- teachers will be uh involved in PLCs, and so there will not be any, if a student chooses to get up and do their their math homework at eight o'clock, that's their choice, but there's no login time at eight o'clock.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thanks.
Is there a login time at any point?
Yes, yes, for their cl- for their classes that they they have to follow that bell, there's bell schedule, they have first period, they have to show up to first period uh in them. So high school is the morning uh really from nine to around twelve is is actually uh they're engaged in live classroom.
And when you say show up, does that, what does that mean? They're on a video screen or they uh have, you know, in the chat uh logged in, or what is that?
Yeah, so thank you for that question. I'm glad you brought that up, actually. So uh see, uh you know, the true, truest form of synchronous learning would be uh if you were my teacher, Director, read my words, and you, and this was your class, uh you would see all of us, our bright and shining faces here, and you would uh deliver instruction to us. Um so that would, that's the truest uh form of synchronous learning. That's how we'll record it for that class period. Now, you notice that the kids are going to like two classes in the morning, and then they have the afternoon asynchronous. So how will we know if they're participating in that? At some point in that day, in the day, they'll need to log on to Canvas, and it doesn't have to be at, you know, two o'clock in the afternoon, but they'll have to log on at some point and do whatever task is required of them, and we can uh, we can detect that uh login, and then that counts as a as our positive attendance for the student during the day. Now, will they, uh so they should log in for their class, and they should be just like we are looking at each other now. They could uh, they could definitely participate uh via chat, but they have to be logged in to do that. So um there'll be a variety of ways that teachers can um engage with students. So we have a variety of apps that uh Luis and OTL team have uh procured through the, which we call the digital backpack. So there's uh sometimes in their applied learning time, they may be working on a lesson uh for history uh using NearPod, which is a, is a highly engaging um app that students can, it's very interactive, it's video, and there's check for understanding in there. So there there are things that, all of the apps that were chosen, were chosen because they uh they sync up with Canvas, and so teachers can get assessment data about students uh on a regular basis. So it's not always just, you know, the kind of what we think of as a normal test that we take in a class, but there's lots of uh assessment, for informal assessment data, teachers can get to make sure students are learning, which is how they'll decide that uh Julie, uh that, you know, um they're, I may need to see Andrew, because Andrew is just, he's just not doing well. In history, I look at his NearPod, he's really not logging in. He's staying on there for thirty-five seconds, I can tell that. So then I'm gonna tell Andrew, hey, I need you to come on small-group day uh and uh and work with me, so we can, we can check that out. So there, there's lots of different uh kinds of checks and balances in the, in these uh, in these plans. So the teachers are able to respond to the needs of students.
Yeah, can I just say, as the parent of a high schooler, uh this is great, and I really appreciate, you know, all sort of the flexibility for students, but also that rigor and the a way for, you know, I was telling someone today that grades are a communication tool, you know, and so the the goal is to help students and parents know where kids are. Um and so that having the that ability to look at all of that information and be able to respond and be able to say, okay, we need you in small group, or like Director DePassy said, like, are we gonna be able to be responsive and flexible? You know, these kinds of things allow teachers to see where students are and adjust, and I think that's gonna be really key. So I, thank you so much for the work you and your team have done on this, Chief Bird.
All right, are there any other questions before we move along to the next portion of our uh time together today?
Go ahead, Director.
Uh I have one other question. Um and I realize uh this is an incredible undertaking uh with not enough time and sometimes conflicting directives from the state. We did have some families request uh to see if we could do some evening instruction. Presumably, these are parents who work during the day and would want to be there to support their child uh for at least part of the instructional day. Um can you talk about did you consider that incredible challenge to do that? It's hard, hard enough doing one schedule.
Yeah, so and we really um, you know, uh we really wanted to have uh students have the most uh routine as possible. Uh so we wanted to kind of mirror the schedule for a couple of reasons, also because our our teachers, we have to give them a predictable schedule to to work as well. So um the schedules uh that we consider all, you know, daytime schedules, again, with flexibility built in, so that if uh there, um you know, their parents can certainly check in on them and see what's happening, but uh we'll have opportunities to to review the kind of work that they're doing. These platforms are twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, so anytime that a a parent would like to uh be able to see progress of their child, they can. But we um won't have any instruction um outside the regular uh school day, except for what um, you know, we already have with Portland Portland Evening Scholars or the, you know, those programs will still operate the way they are operating. The multiple pathways to graduation programs, their schedules are they are gonna be slightly different from the ones you saw here, because they are unique uh programs that are offering very unique. You know, they they're they're tailored to a unique uh group of students, so those programs would op- would operate uh a little differently than the regular high school program.
So th- these families would probably really appreciate the kind of technical assistance.
Yep.
So in the evening, they can, with their student, log in to CSAR or Canvas and really see how their student's doing, what their student has been working on.
Yep.
And
Thank you.
And communicate with the teacher.
Yes, thank you for that, and we'll uh develop some group um topic.
I have a, I have two questions, um and they're totally different. Um one is, I have some people I work with who are taking time off from work from home in order to be able to help their K-five students um get online and, you know, make the transition. Um it's gonna be required. And um obviously, a lot of people aren't gonna be able to do that, whether if they're essential workers or they don't have that option to take um time off, um whatever the set of circumstances. How um, how would parents get help from the school district if they're in that situation? Like, I am an essential worker, say I'm a OHSU nurse, and that's my shift. And so I can't be there. What, where do people go to raise their hand? Is that like at the school level? Is there a centralized?
Yes, so Director.
To a learning pod, or what?
So that's coming up, actually, in uh Daniela Desma's presentation. She's gonna be talking about the supports that we offer, so I will just say that there are uh those are um coming online as we um, you know, the more and more, as the superintendent said earlier, are coming online as we are continue to develop those. But we do know that people have unique needs, and um we, our principals are sort of our frontline um advocates for those, and and they have reached out to us uh about a variety of situations. So there are definitely um alternative uh solutions that we are working with, and so I wanna, that would be part of Danny's uh presentation, then we can come back and ask questions again after she.
Okay, but let's go ahead and do that. Let's um, it's seven-twenty-three, which means we've been here almost ninety minutes. So let's take a um three-minute stretch break. I'm gonna ask that everybody stand up, including you, Superintendent Guerrero. Uh just so that we stretch a little bit. It's good for our bodies, it's good for our brains. Thank you, Director Bailey, for following directions. Um and then we'll come back at seven-twenty-six with Daniela Desma, and then we can ask more questions after that. All right, three minutes, go. At 26, Ms. LaDesma, are you here and ready?
I am, I'm here and really ready.
All right.
Ready and excited. Well, thank you everyone for your patience. I know that folks are anxiously awaiting hearing a little bit more about family supports. So, you know, as we heard from Chief Byrd, we know the power of the instructional corps and the education of students. We know how critically important it is that we're focused on that instructional corps. But we also know how important it is to ensure that the cultural, emotional, and basic needs of our students and families are met so that we can really make sure that we're ensuring that our students are succeeding. And as we all are aware, given the challenges of COVID, the economic fallout as a result of COVID, and the struggle for racial justice, our students and families are in need of quite a bit of set of supports in order to be able to thrive and realize their potential in these challenging times. So to that end, the superintendent charged a cross-department committee to scan our district and our community, to document and to publish all of the student family supports that are currently offered at schools. So the team was charged with publishing this menu of supports and interventions that were specifically aimed at making sure that our Black and Native students and students of color can successfully engage in learning and positive relationship building. These supports, we were charged with making sure that they include a continuum of services that meet the needs of students and align with our tiered systems of support, our vision, PPS reimagined, our emerging strategic plan, our work in racial equity and social justice, and culturally responsive and sustaining instructional practices. So the team has been considering these supports while also trying to align school-based and external partner-provided supports, while also making sure that we're integrating the stakeholder input and feedback from the work that our chief of engagement, Jonathan Garcia, has been leading. And so as a result of this, we have been, we have been really busy. And we have categorized supports into five distinct types, and you'll see a list of that. So we focused in on academic supports, and these are supports that are focused on providing additional academic interventions to ensure that students are learning. They include supports such as academic tutoring, curriculum support, and even professional development for teachers. Belonging and connection. These supports are focused on providing social and emotional support for students and include supports such as school-based counselors, access to a social worker, or a qualified mental health provider, group sessions, and mentoring and leadership development. Family supports and resources. These are supports that are focused on providing families with the connections, referrals, and resources to ensure that critical and basic needs are met. These include items such as food distribution, case management, wraparound services, and anti-poverty efforts. Enrichment and extended day. These supports are focused on augmenting academics in structured and engaging activities to enhance and expand the learning of students outside of school hours. And these include activities like Chess for Success or virtual after-school programs. Culturally specific supports are supports that are provided by a culturally specific provider, and we'll talk a little bit about those. So our diverse committee, which includes several departments, also several different types of leaders throughout our district, scanned our district. We identified which schools these supports were provided. We worked with principals, we worked with principal supervisors to get an exhaustive catalog. And so we are right now in the process of working in collaboration with our communications department and language access services department headed up by David Roy to create a catalog, and I say catalog in parentheses, so that parents will know about services provided at their student's school, and will also be sending a postcard to every family that's translated, that directs them to this catalog. And David's team not only is working on translating the information so that it's relevant to families and their home language, but also making sure that it's visually appealing, that it's easy to read and accessible, and that it's not just a giant spreadsheet like I would, like I would create. So we are working in partnership. One of the things that we're really proud of is that this catalog of services not only represents the work of our PPS, our talented and diverse PPS staff, but it also represents our community, our partners, our sister jurisdictions, their supports as well. And we are really committed to continue to ensure this collaboration and coordination and making sure that we're sharing information so that, so that parents and students know where resources are located and how to access them. So these supports are evolving. I want to be really, be really careful about this to let you know that we are continuing to get guidance from ODE, and we're continuing to work within our district to make sure that we're coordinated and that we're, that we're really maximizing the impact of these services. The other thing that we are, we are doing and that we're committed to do is to continue to evaluate and analyze any gaps in services so that we're able to really get in and provide needed supports. These supports will be catalogued by schools, but there is a tiering to these, right? So we have really prioritized our Native and Black students, our students of color. But we're also continuing to make sure that our CSI, our TSI, and our Title Schools have a range of services to really make sure that we're supporting our students and ensuring the success of our students in those school communities. So I want to take you through some examples of students. If you wouldn't mind advancing, Roseanne. So Sean told you and introduced you to some students, and I'd like to tell you a little bit more about those students. So you heard Sean talk about Maya, who's a second grader at Harrison Park. Maya and her sister Kaia attend Harrison Park, and Kaia is a third grader at Harrison Park. And her family, who are, who are Native, they just moved to Portland last year. And they are, they are trying to connect not only to services and to the schools, but to the larger Native community in Portland, and wanting to make sure that they are really, making sure that their students are succeeding. And so they are at Harrison Park. There are strong connections through the NEA Family Centers, culturally specific family engagement services. And as a student, both Maya and Kaia are excited to participate in Harrison Park's Student Equity Team. Maya's mom, as Sean mentioned, is working, but unfortunately, her dad lost his job, and they are, they are worried about how they're going to be able to meet all of their, all of their basic needs, including food. And so Harrison Park is both a PPS nutrition site, which will be offering food services on set days, but it's also a food pantry site. So on days when nutrition services aren't available, the family will be able to access the food pantry to be able to shop for, to shop for food to get them through the weekend and through those times when, when they need additional food. You know, Kaia is a third grader, and she really likes school. She's learning to, she's learning about her peers and really likes that. But one of the things that the principal and teachers have identified is that she's, she's struggling with reading. And so Harrison Park has access to instructional specialists, and it's also a SUN community school where she'll be able to access additional academic supports to really, to really round out and really get her on track for reading in third grade, which as you all know, is a really critical time. We heard about Kyrie. Kyrie is Black, and he is a, he's a seventh grader at Beaumont, and so he's right in that critical pre-adolescent to adolescent age. That's really important. And Kyrie has really struggled with connection during COVID and also this summer's racial uprising. It has been really difficult for him. He is not really looking forward to starting school again. And he especially, even though he's, he's doing well in English, as Sean talked about, he's really struggling with math and has some anxiety about math. So Beaumont is a SUN school site, as well as a SUN youth advocacy site and a Promise Neighborhood site. So both SUN Youth Advocacy and Promise Neighborhoods provide culturally specific supports and case management at the middle school level. But also this year, Black Parent Initiative will provide Positive Cultural Identity Development Program in partnership with Beaumont. And we, we think that Kyrie would be a really great student to participate. Beaumont also has a school counselor and a qualified mental health provider for the SES classroom, and they also have really robust restorative justice practices to help the school climate. Academically, Beaumont has both a full-time instructional coach, as well as a half-time math instructional specialist that Kyrie and his teachers will be able to access to support him through the school year. Marcos, we heard about Marcos at Roosevelt High School. And Marcos has two sisters. One of his sisters is Esperanza, and Esperanza attends Roosevelt with him. And then he also has a sister Luisa, who attends George Middle School. And their family identifies as Latino. And Marcos, before coming to Roosevelt in eighth grade, when he was at George, was identified as an academic priority student. And so Open School in partnership with George and Roosevelt worked with Marcos and, and has spent some time with him in his summer before he came to Roosevelt, and then has been working with him. And he is doing well, as you heard. He's, he's a really avid musician, and so he's, he's doing a great job of balancing his academic and his arts education with the help of his open school advocate. Unfortunately, his sister Esperanza, through COVID and all of the virtual reality, has really struggled with some online harassment. She has really sort of retreated from school and school activities and has really struggled to connect with her peers because of the climate online. And so we're really excited that she can access Latino Network's Escalaera, an early Escalaera program. And at Roosevelt, Latino Network also has a Colegio de Padres. And through this family engagement program, they can really support Esperanza's parents so that they can help navigate some of the online parental controls for technology, as they can really understand the technology that she's using and help work with Esperanza to come up with a plan to make sure, so that she's really, she's really protected in the online environment. Mark, Roosevelt is also a SUN site school. They also have an onsite community mental health provider that is culturally specific, a counselor and a social worker. And so this team of folks between the staff at Latino Network, the SUN site lead agency, the community mental health provider, the council, the counselor and social worker are all working in alignment to make sure that she has access to services and support so that she can come through this online bullying experience better. Luisa, we heard about their sister Luisa, who attends George Middle School. And there is a food pantry site at George, and so family will also be able to access that when the PPS nutrition site, which is at Roosevelt, is not available. The last student I wanted to talk to you about was Natasha at Cleveland. And so we heard that Natasha is in the IB program. She is very interested in school, but Natasha has quite a bit of anxiety about college and really wanting to, is really struggling socially. And so at Cleveland, there is not only a school counselor who can help her sort of work through some of her college plans and really support her in that way, there's also onsite-based community mental health provider that she'll be able to access to help work through some of her anxiety issues. So you heard a little bit about the set of services that are offered to our students that we talked about, their students and their families. What we're hoping is that we will be able to provide a robust catalog so that families can look and identify their school, think about their students' needs and their families' needs, be able to see where, what services are best suited for them. So in our catalog, we'll not only have the location of where the services are, but we'll also try to have an easy, easy-to-access definition of what's going on at each of the schools. So we're really excited about this. We're really, we're, we're in process, and we've got it almost all nailed down, but we're really excited to be able to communicate this. A lot of the work that we'll be doing, not only with our committee, but with our partners at Multloma County, at 211 Info, our parents, our, our engagement team at PPS is making sure that we're thinking critically about how we make sure that this information gets communicated across the district and throughout the district. And so we're looking forward to coming back to you, to, to talk to you about some of the lessons that we learned and ways that we can make sure that we're really improving, not only on what's being offered, to make sure that we're meeting needs, but also ways that we're making sure that people can access it and communicate our, our plans. So I think I'll open it up for questions.
Director Brim Edwards, did you get your question answered that you had raised at the end of the last session?
No. But I'll ask it. Can you hear me?
Yes.
What, Zach wasn't clear, my microphone is off. So I had some technology questions. So earlier, when Dr. Byrd was talking, he talked about you might, in the morning class, when it's the synchronistic opportunity, when you have a classroom, that you'd have the screen of all the tiles of the student photos. And from talking to teachers last spring, they said that generally the practice was, students had their videos off. And I'm wondering what our policy is, and if it's, there, it sounds like there's a lot of benefits of having them on, just the engagement level. But also, there's questions about when students have them on, privacy-related questions, and what's in the background, and whether people are taking screenshots, just the, perhaps the disparity of students' environments. So I'm curious sort of what our general guidelines or policies are related to that?
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Sean, and I would also just say that Brenda Martnik and our Title IX director have been working on digital citizenship, where we want to sort of like, not only talk about policies, but talk about like a culture online and sort of how do we ensure that we're really supporting students to be good digital, digital citizens and to be really supportive of each other, you know, and create cultures where it's free from, free from harassment for sure, but also ways that students can support each other and be aware of some of the issues. So Sean, I think also can answer-
So in addition to that, you noticed if you look at me or Jonathan Garcia, clearly our background is blurred, so that's a feature that Zoom has. That's also a feature that Google, Google meets, has just introduced. So we're trying that out, some of us are trying that out in the district. So there are ways that you can minimize the background, because we don't want children to feel, you know, embarrassed or whatever about, you know, their background. So, so there's that, but is there, is there a policy that the district has around, around turning the camera on or off? No, teachers, you know, different teachers approach that different ways, but as, as Danny said, we do have our digital citizenship lessons that we're teaching our students and also our teachers, so that, you know, we have some guidelines about how to deal with, just as you would in a classroom, how to deal with bullying, how to deal with misbehavior of, of students that are online. And so, you know, we will address those issues on a case-by-case basis. And, you know, there are kids that, you know, they may not want to show their face online, but they can certainly participate through the chat. So teachers can monitor student engagement in different ways. There are, you know, there are instant polling things on some of these programs that you can use. Kids will have a variety of ways to engage in the, in the platform.
I would just add, I think that's right. I think for a lot of the reasons you listed, Director Brim Edwards, I don't think we want to have any hard and fast rules around camera on. I think we want to, we want to focus on the responsible participation and afford our students some level of judgment. I had an opportunity to do arts classes last week, and I had a chance to maybe visit six or seven. It was early in the morning in some cases, so not every student wanted to have camera on 100%. Maybe that was a reason, I don't know. But they were really good about when they were asking a question, when they were contributing a comment. They would turn their camera on, they would leave it on for a little while, sometimes they would take a break for a minute. You know, so I, I, we want to leave that to sort of our educators, building a sense of community with, with our students. We'll monitor for it. It's a great conversation to have with our educators around, you know, is this turning out to be some kind of a, of an issue if our students aren't visibly on the screen 100% of the time? For many of the reasons that we want to be sensitive about that that you raised.
Okay, thank you.
All right, did anybody else have any other questions for Ms. LaDesma or for Chief Byrd?
I have a question. How are we supporting teachers who are parents of students? And then there's also a whole childcare question. But one of this first part at least is specifically for, you're, you're a teacher, you're trying to teach at home, your eight, your eight-year-old is trying to be in on a class, something happens, they lose contact.
Sure. Well, so-
What's a parent to do?
Yeah, so on childcare, in childcare, big picture, I'll, I'll sort of refer back to, like, a lot of our planning is evolving. So we're receiving additional guidance from ODE and then responding. So we should have some pretty definitive plans moving forward around childcare later in the week, and so we can speak to that. I might turn it over to Sean to talk a little bit about some of the negotiations around the contract with teachers and sort of how that's been discussed in terms of supporting them while they're doing that. I think, yeah, I don't want to pause it, but I think he's got the, he's got the right answer right there.
Thank you, Danny. I wish, I wish I had those answers. So, yeah, we did, we did talk with our labor partners about that, and that's why we, that's one of the reasons that we wanted to establish a regular schedule for, for teachers. And that's one of the reasons that we, originally, we had thought, well, we'll have, you know, sort of standard schedules across the school district, no matter the level, but then based on feedback from parents, community members, and, and our educators, they said, you know, we have our own child, we have childcare, we've already arranged it, we base it on our schedule that we are normally working, so what, can we, can we stick with that? So that's why we made a modification and stuck with that schedule. And remember that teachers will be online with students sometime, they'll be, students will be working independently other times. And that is also, there's, there's time in the day that's built in for parents, for teachers who are parents, that have to sort of tend to their own children while they're trying to also do their jobs. So we tried to build in some flexibility, of course, but, you know, their, their primary responsibility, you know, when they're working, is, is there responsibility to their students that they're teaching? And just as we were in the, in the spring, we actually didn't run into too much of, of an issue with that. We, you know, principals will deal with that as, as it comes up, but it actually has not, was not a real issue in the spring that rose to where it was, where's the real problem.
Sure, Laura. If I could ask, and we had a question about how students might feel about cameras on 100% of the time, and I would be curious to hear as we get underway from the student perspective, but we have student rep Shu here, and I think he was trying to raise his hand, so maybe he has a thought on that, or maybe a different comment altogether, but I would be curious to hear from the student experience, and I'm sure we'll want to share with the board a report out once things are underway.
Nathaniel?
Yeah. In terms of the camera question, I do not, I do not think that having any sort of formal policy in place would be a good idea for the reasons that have been mentioned. But with that said, I think that it is generally beneficial for people to be on camera. So I guess if we could find a way to encourage students to keep their cameras on without mandating it, especially, you know, if there's a specific issue that they're facing, that would be ideal. I also have a few unrelated questions.
Why don't you ask them right now? Perfect timing.
Great. Well, the first one gets back to the schedule, scheduling that we were talking about earlier. Well, it's just, has there been any discussion around retaining any aspects of these new schedules, such as the four-by-four system, for instance, after the pandemic is over and we're back in, in person education?
So the, the schedule would be the same for this entire academic school year? So, you know, once you start, that's, you can't change it in midstream, but beyond that, we have not discussed making formal changes to the high school schedule beyond, I mean, this is definitely a reaction to the, to the global pandemic that we're dealing with.
Okay, so the plan is that after, after this year's over, assuming that COVID has been, for the most part, dealt with, we would be fully back to our normal schedules?
That's, that's our, that's our plan.
Okay, sorry, I'm just trying to clarify that.
Or in two years or three years, whenever it's over.
Yeah. And the other thing was, well, I know I've mentioned this in past meetings as well, but I'd just like to follow up. Is there any sort of plan regarding making up missed assignments for high schoolers? Because that, that sort of thing, I think, is really critical, especially with the four-by-four schedule.
So are you referring to, so if you miss an assignment, will you have an opportunity to make it up?
Yes.
Okay, so I would say that I don't have any concrete answer for that today. I know you and I have talked about it- Okay. So I would say that I don't have any concrete answer for that today. I know you and I have talked about it before. So I, I, I will bring that up at our, with our high school principals. But, you know, of course we are encouraging, and I know that our teachers are, have been flexible and we're encouraging flexibility for students and for adults in this environment. So I will follow up with that. And you and I, I think we have another meeting scheduled already. So we can, we can discuss that in further detail. Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
So. Was that one of your questions, Nathaniel, or did you have another one? Okay, you're all set. All right. Director Konstam?
Thank you. Um, I appreciate that the staff really took a student's eye view on things tonight. And that's, that was a good way for us to walk through it. One of the things I'm curious about is that with our student investment account funds, we just invested in a lot more school social workers and counselors and we have our school psychologists. So I'm just wondering for those, those specialists in our schools, what does their day look like? And how do they get connected with students in need? I understand, Danny, the way you portrayed it in terms of a catalog of services that a student can proactively select. But, but how are we deploying those employees to really ferret out who needs help?
I think you were listening in on some of my meetings today because a lot of the work that we've been talking about is sort of how do we make sure that there is that like coordination? Like a real central issue for a lot of our principals and partners has been, how do we make sure that we avoid the situation where one student doesn't have six, six people sort of really trying to sort of like land on the student and the family. Well, the student next, next to, to that student has zero. And so one of the things that I'm really looking forward to in the next year is really because we have that counselor, social worker, qualified mental health provider is thinking about how they can play a critical role in supporting principals around coordinating these services. We've talked a lot about the need for sort of aligned sort of referral for students, identifying students in need and families in need. And then also thinking about how to make sure that the, the whole set of sort of providers and support are really aligned. And so I've heard principals and service providers talking about that critical role of the counselor and the social worker and doing some of that alignment.
Thank you.
Can I ask, can I ask a question about food?
Absolutely. My food is at the door. It's come, my postmate is coming soon. So let's talk food.
And this is going to get a little wonky, I'm afraid. So one of the ways that we were able to deliver, what was it, 1.2 million meals was that there was a waiver in place that allowed us to make use of federal resources. But in a, in a remote environment and the Federal Department of Education has rescinded that waiver now. So it's going to make delivery of food, I think, much more complicated. Do we, and this is fairly new. So you're allowed to say you're not quite sure how this is going to work yet. But did it, has there been any planning around, like, do we know how this is going to work? And what do we, what can we do as a school district and as a larger community to, because I'm guessing this is, I'm guessing we're going to lose some federal resources. And there's huge need in general out in the community. So what can we do?
So, so I'll let Russ speak to the specifics about the funding of our nutrition sites. He heads up our sort of operational site. But one of the things I'd say in terms of like accessing, because we know that there is going to be an increasing, a more and more increasing need for food. You'll notice that we have more, I think under, I think it was like Sean's really good idea to make sure that we have more nutrition sites than we had before. And then we're really trying to focus in terms of how it works on making sure that there's that coverage between the days that PPS is offering food and, and nutrition to our students at those sites. But making sure that those sites are, that we're really doing really strong communication. So on those days that it's not available, that the food pantry sites, it's run out of the, out of the food bank in partnership with Multlima County and our sun providers. That where families can go and access and sort of shop for food at those sites. That there, that we've got every student who's really, every student and family who knows about that. So David Roy's team is really sort of working on making sure that we're continuing to do those question and answers of like, on which days, where do we get food? And then what's the, the sort of like map of where you go? And so I think what, what at least, you know, a quick scan is, is that we've got pretty good geographic coverage as well as that sort of side by side coverage as well. And so we, we really need to make sure that we're doing a good job of communicating that, showing the map. And so I'm, I'm really confident in, in David's team and sort of making sure that we, we've got that.
So the, so the existing model, the existing model is, is still going to be doable under the federal regs now?
I'm going to, I think I see Russ, who can talk a little bit more. I have a good part of the funding conversation for interest.
So let me lean in on this, Director Moore. To, to be first class, I'm not prepared to talk about the funding component of this. This would be something that I'd be happy to, to return to as a discussion point for our next meeting. I know our, our food, food service team has spent a great deal of time planning on, on how to make food available, including even home delivery for some students using our buses as the means to, to get food to, to families. I also know that they have looked at an expansion of community eligibility as a way to be able to reach more families and provide a larger range of services. But your specific question in terms of change in the guidance or change in, in the waiver and how that's impacting funding, I'm not prepared to speak to at this point in time.
And we do have, PPS I know right now is actively asking families, the principals are asking families if they're unable to come to distribution sites, if they need home delivery. And then compiling those lists for our bus drivers and then also our food pantry partners have their own volunteer networks that deliver the weekly boxes to families who are unable to come and pick them up. So that communication is going on now. And Rita, I think it's still a little bit unclear what the USDA mean spirited refusal to extend the, the waiver on the, the terms of, of the school lunch program, what that is going to actually look like. But I do know that there is vociferous opposition in Congress and our whole Oregon delegation is working hard on that. And the council grade city schools is working hard on that because it's just plain mean. And so we're, we're, we're working on that. And also just don't know exactly what those changes mean in terms of inhibiting us from getting food to kids.
Thank you, Director Konstam. All right. We only have.
I have one more comment. I've got one more comment about the food.
We haven't heard from Michelle or Andrew. So I was just going to say five minutes left. Michelle or Andrew, do you have anything to add?
Just on the topic of food again, I'm wondering if, if we have the capacity to sort of map out some of the other, other providers in the network, partner, partner organizations such as the Oregon Food Bank, independent pantries, so we can help the people within our, within our system. Also, you know, partnering with our culturally specific organizations and two on one. So kind of everyone knows the lay of the land, where food is available, should they need it?
So Director DePasso is David Roy. We did, in the spring, we put together a composite map that included our own PPS school meal distribution sites as well as sites and organizations such as the ones you're referring to. We will be doing that again. So that in the next couple of days, someone could go to our website and find not only where meals will be distributed in our own schools, but find a lot of that information, including some sites where, where there are food pantries and other similar services. So we will definitely be sharing that. We will also, like we do with anything that is truly sort of fundamental for our families to know. We will, we are making sure, as Danny mentioned, that we are communicating this in a number of ways, right? So not just email or web, but over social, we'll be sending text, robo call, working with our principals who communicate this directly to their respective school communities and making sure our community partners know that as well, so they can disseminate it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew, did you have a comment or question?
Yeah, just a real question going. First of all, thank you. I mean, this was an incredible amount of information. I really appreciate. And, and I'm hoping the public is watching or that they can go back and look at the slideshow, the complexity that went into planning the scheduling, planning the wraparound services and student supports is incredible. So, so thank you for all that work. Going way back to Dr. Bird's presentation, I realize there's a question about scheduling. So I, I, and I really did appreciate sort of going through from a student centered lens. When you talked about the IB students, since IB program, again, it wasn't a hundred percent. Are they doing something different than the four by four? And how is that working with, with sort of students at Cleveland or Lincoln who are not going to be going for the IB?
Thank you. So they are doing a full year schedule as they have now. So you saw eight periods instead of four that thought rotate through, through the whole year. And at both schools, because of the complexity of the IB program and really it being a two year program that requires the additional time. All students at Cleveland take some IB class. So it is an IB for all schools. So every student would be involved some way in AP. Where you'll see a variation of that is in the eighth and 10th grade where, you know, they, they might not need a full eight classes, but because of division 22 requirements, they, students have to be scheduled for full time load. So if they're, whatever their schedules, they have to be scheduled for that, except for seniors who can be scheduled for six. So what, what you saw in that example though, was even so that student was a full IB diploma student. So she had some, she had some IB study periods built into her schedule. So not all those classes are academic. So it lightened their load. Students that are not participating fully in IB will have more elective choices. So they may be able to be in the band and also have art class and also, and also have a study hall to help support their academics. So they'll still have the same credit. Everybody in high school, in our high schools have the same opportunity to earn the same number of credits. It's just how you dice it up over the year. But there will, you, you need six credits to be on track for graduation each year. So, and, you know, those are made up of some requirements and then elective. So the students at those schools though, the high percentage of them, which is why we had to stay with the year long schedule and make some modifications in terms of the rigor of the schedule. Because of the high number of students that participate in the IB program of both of those schools.
So I agree with that. It does, it, it, it's going to create an interesting situation in the district, right? Where I think we'll actually have an opportunity to look at how students are, are, are performing at, at Cleveland and Lincoln versus other schools that, other high schools that have gone to the four by four schedule. You know, and I met with the DSC earlier tonight, you know, they have a lot of questions about scheduling and, you know, and I get a ton of emails from people. Sort of, you know, why aren't we still doing eight? That's better than four. And, and, you know, I think this is one of those moments where none of, you are all educational experts and throughout the country, you're having these conversations. And I trust that, that you are, you know, moving towards what is sort of the consensus view, right, around what's going to be best for the students. And, and I think, you know, it makes sense to me why a four by four schedule might, might make sense. I, I think this is an opportunity to sort of see how that's working. I would really encourage the principals at those two high schools as well as, as our senior directors and staff to be really focused on the students in those schools who might not be going for full IB, who might actually be struggling. I mean, if, if this theory about online learning and the challenges is correct, you know, we, we've made accommodations now for the IB students. But perhaps those accommodations will actually do harm or damage to the non IB diploma students. And so I appreciate that you've taken that into account. We're talking about electives. I think it's going to be really important for us to put a lot of focus in. And I think that should be an expectation of, of the principals, teachers and staff at those schools to make, be making sure that those children, those students are not dropping through the cracks. At that time, one of the questions that I got from one of the DSCs, one of Nathaniel's colleagues is, you know, well, what if the four is not working, right? And, and how will we know that? And as you said, we're going to stick with the schedule all year because we need to do that. That's important to have that consistency. But I think we also need to be willing to step back after a few months and, and ask that question as well. Is it working the way we assumed it would be working? Is it helping students get through this, you know, pandemic, you know, virtual learning environment better? Or, or maybe there are some, some other models that, that would work.
And, and Dr. Chair, or Chief, I am like, what is your title, Sean? Chief Bird, if you could go ahead and respond to Andrew comments through an email, that'd be great. And I know we may have more questions about reentry. And we'll, we'll continue to adapt and learn as we go. And if, if there are any other questions from directors, please feel free to email Sean and Danny, because I know they have nothing else to do other than respond to emails, right? Through our thing. We're going to go ahead and move on, Director Konstam, to the rest.
Just a second, please. So we had another item on our agenda tonight that I think we've missed, which was.
We, we've got it. Yeah. Sorry, what was that?
Chief Bird, we had another item on our agenda for tonight in the reentry presentation that was just a status report on our enrollment. Chief Bird?
Yes. So we are, I know that we've gotten questions about kindergarten enrollment. Is it up or down? And so it was a bit lower at the, when I last checked, but we are, you know, now people are interacting with school board. We're doing different kinds of outreach. So we'll have, we'll be able to send you updated numbers. And we're also have, we've worked with the Office of Enrollment and Transfer to see in areas where if there is a lower turnout, excuse me, it's my dog. There's a lower turnout than they can do. Can do an enrollment fair.
Okay. We'll let you go and you can send us an email, but I'm, I'm interested in those numbers as well as the numbers of our students that we're seeing enroll in the state virtual charter school and just the, the attrition at, at various grade levels. So keep us posted.
All right. Thank you. We're going to move on now to our committee reports. But before we get there, Director Scott actually caught that we missed a resolution. So we had a resolution in the agenda that went out to everyone that was labeled six, one, six, five. But then when Director Moore made her resolution, we labeled that one six, one, six, five. So we had two six, one, six, fives tonight. So in order to make sure that our record and intent are clear, we as a voter board are going to need, need to re-vote together on both the original resolution, six, one, six, five, related to a settlement. And what should have been numbered six, one, six, six, which is the preschool for all measure. Does that make sense to everybody? So six, one, six, five is settlement, six, one, six, six is resolution. And if I could ask you to mute, if you're not speaking, that would be great. So we are going to go ahead and move those two resolutions to make them clear, both six, one, six, five and six, one, six, six. But I have a motion and a second on those two resolutions. I heard Michelle seconded. Sorry, Director Scott and Director DePasso. The board will now vote on resolution six, one, six, five. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? All right. Resolutions six, one, six, five and six, one, six, six are approved, are approved by a vote of seven to zero. With student representative Shu voting.
Yes.
All right. We're going to move on to the committee and conference reports. Rita, could you please provide your policy committee update?
Well, we had a meeting yesterday of the policy committee. We got some updates on some policies that are currently in the middle of community engagement. We talked about a new protocol that we're going to start to use around community engagement related to the policy work. And the upshot is that we're going to try to do the community engagement work, trying to front load that as opposed to doing it at the backend. We also talked about, what did we talk about? That was 24 hours ago. Who remembers? We also talked about some upcoming policies that we're, we're looking to either revise or do kind of additional criteria for. One of them is the real estate policy. Where, where, we're going to be looking at. do kind of additional criteria for. One of them is the real estate policy where, where, we're going to be looking at establishing criteria that could be used in the event that the board or the district wanted to have lease agreements that deviated somehow from the, from the standard policy and, and practices. And then we got, we got the annual report on the complaints over the last school year, 2019, 2020. And we're going to be looking at any kind of improvements to the process that we might want to consider. It was just the, it was the, the first, kind of the first attempt to look at how the policy has played out on the ground over the last two years. And staff will be coming back to us at the next policy committee meeting with some recommendations for some slight amendments to the policy. That's it. And we're meeting again in three weeks.
Any other committee reports or other conference reports that need to occur right now?
I have a conference, a committee report. So from the audit committee, we, I want to thank, we're, we're welcoming two student reps to the audit committee. Part Parker Myras and Jackson Weinberg. So really glad that they're willing to serve this year. In addition, the longest-serving audit committee member in recent memory is cycling off, Kari Guy. She's been a great addition over several iterations of the committee. So we'll have an opening on the committee. And I'm working with Director Pass and then the other members of the audit committee to get the word out about the opening. And hopefully we'll have that filled before we get our work started this year. And then the last thing is on August 30th, there's going to be a joint bond and audit committee meeting on the 2019, 2020 independent performance audit of the bond. So that'll be bringing together the both committees to get that bond, that bond audit report.
And speaking of the bond, vote in November.
Excuse me, vote yes in November.
Scott, Scott amends my statement to say vote yes in November. Director Brim Edwards, did you have anything else to add about the bond at this time?
About the bond? No, only that I think there are probably two notable milestones. One, our ballot title has passed the deadline. So we haven't established ballot title. It took, I think it took the longest, longer to get out of the board than it did across the finish line into being a coming official ballot title. So that's great news. In addition, we have a, our general consultant for the campaign who has hired a campaign staff and we're ready to hit the ground running. And there'll be more, I think with the start of school that we'll want to share with our broader school community.
All right. Any other reports before we move on to the consent agenda?
Just would, would add that if there's any of you out there in the community who would like to have a presentation about the bond at any group that you're engaged in, whether it's school-related or a community group, we'd be glad to help you out with that. Just contact, well, Director Brim Edwards is our fearless leader of the bond.
All right, we're going to move on to the items from the consent agenda that were pulled, which. Sorry, I muted myself instead of switching to the script. It's, it's only eight o'clock, but apparently I'm acting like it's midnight. So those are the three contracts that were pulled. And I know Director Brim Edwards, you had a question about another contract that wasn't pulled. So why don't you ask your question about the one contract that wasn't pulled first, and then we'll get to the three contracts that were pulled. Does that make sense?
It does. And actually, one of the, the question about the catapult contract is the same as the other three contracts on one of the items. So the business agenda describes for the contracts as running from nine, 20, or September 1, 2020 to June 30th, 2021, but with an option to renew the four additional one-year terms. If you, if, as a community member, or if you just look at it, it might look like that we're approving one year, a one-year approval of it, but it's actually, and then you come back next year for an extension. But in fact, tonight, when we vote on them, it's board approval of a four-year contract. And I know based on the Student Success Act, community-focused groups, we heard about the importance of multi-year contracts from our community partners. My question is, if these are actually multi-year contracts, not one-year contracts, when and where will the actual annual performance reporting be done? And how, and how will it be reported out? Because it won't be coming back to the board again next, next year, in theory.
I, I also see a typo in resolution six, one, six, two on new contracts regarding catapult learning. It, it has the contract term nine, one, 2020 through eight, 31, 21. So I don't know if that's a typo. Did we mean that to say the contract goes through June 30, 21, like the others?
So I can speak to the reporting question and then I'll let folks, or speak to the typo. So as far as the, when the board will have access to the performance reports, one of the ways that we're moving towards more transparency is that each quarter, we're going to be updating our RESJ partnership website. So about a month ago, I sent you all a memo with, that contained a link to the current website. Once all of our contracts are, are sort of passed and finalized, we'll update the website with the specific sort of scope of work for each of our contractors. And then once a quarter, we will, we will publish the reporting on the, the sort of progress of our contractors. So the first question I would say is that the board, as well as the public, will have access to this, to this, to the contract performance. Additionally, the superintendent has been convening our partners where we are intending to kind of shift the agenda to those convenings to really talk about performance. We've talked with our partners about the shift and they're really excited. So we want to make this a venue where we're talking not only about individual performance, but also the collective performance of our contractors. They're really interested and engaged around the ideas of sort of how they are surfacing best practices amongst themselves and really committed to our goal of really increasing the impact of these contracts. And so also really committed to working out where, where things may not be going as well and sort of how to mitigate for those issues. I'm also really happy that you all have been so engaged around these partners. I think once we get reentry down, these contracts get, get finalized, we'd like to kind of bring each of our partners by strategy in front of the board to really get, give you more information about what exactly they're doing. And so you'll have a, a chance to kind of hear a little bit about their past work as well as sort of their work moving forward. So one of the goals that we have with these, with these partnerships and through the investment strategy that, that I'm happy to resend the link to you all is increasing the transparency and really publishing not only to, to our board and to our, our own PPS community, but to the, to the partner community at large, is making sure that folks know that we are engaging with these partners, not just because they're culturally specific partners, but because of the strategies that really tie into our theory of action. When we talk about breeding those racial equity strategies, our partners are executing these strategies.
So I'm prepared to respond to the question about the timing on the contract for catapult learning. And it is not a typo. This is federal grant Title I funding and that aligns to the federal fiscal year.
Okay, Director Brim Edwards, what are your, you're muted right now. What are your questions about the other three contracts or comments?
I don't think I'm muted, am I?
You're unmuted now, but you were muted earlier.
I try and be well-trained so I don't get texts from Director Bailey. So these questions, and they're primarily directed at the district, not the community contractors. So most of these contractors, or all of them, we have on tonight, previously held contracts with the district. In the past, we had the previous year's quarterly and year-end reports, which informed the staff and the board of the efficacy of contract in terms of student supports or outcomes and what adjustments might be made in the future before we approve contracts. Obviously this last year, those reports would have been impacted by COVID, at least at the year end. And it sounds like with this new system that Ms. Ledesma just described, that there's, there will be a different process that will be posted. My question is, given the fact that it's now, we'll have that after the contract renewal, how is, how is it that staff will incorporate any learnings or improvements from the reports into the contract, into the contract renewals? So did that, for the example, did that already happen, the contracts that we have coming to us?
Sure. So thank you for your question, Director Brim Edwards. So the, what I would say is that a lot of the learning came in through our redesign process. And I'm, I'm happy, it was probably too long of a memo, but about a month ago, I sent the board a memo describing our sort of like redesign of these, of these, of these contracts. So while we, while we have reviewed their reports and their performance from the last year, we, what was the most instructive in the execution of this, this set of contracts that you're, that we're asking you to approve tonight and subsequent ones that we'll be asking you at, at later board meetings, has been our RFP process. So we heard from our community, we heard from our district about really wanting to put these contracts out to bid. The contract, the RP process was informed by a, a, a pretty thoroughly researched, culturally responsive, racial equity, social justice, investment strategy. So we asked our partners to submit not only sort of how they would sort of, you know, sort of provide services, but we also asked them questions about how they've provided services in the past. We had a review team that was pretty significant. We had multiple departments that were, that were involved. And we also had multiple people. So I think we had like close to 15 people who were, who were part of the reunion. They represented, they represented staff from the Office of Teaching and Learning, Office of School Performance, Community Engagement, myself, principals from middle school, high school and grade school. So we had a really wide range of folks. And so the, I really think about this year as a reset and the RFP as being the primary predictor of sort of how we are intending to sort of move forward with these set of contracts. So this is almost a reset. So we certainly took into account past performance, but the RFP was the most instructive in, in, and the resulting scores and is what was most instructive in the contracts that you have before you right now.
Great, thanks. And I appreciate you mentioning the memo because it was awesome. And if we don't have this posted somewhere, I think it should be because it gives, I think, a really clear blueprint of how we're thinking about this in a comprehensive systemic way. And I think in the past, contract oversight has been an issue for PPS, at least episodically. And so I think the system that's been laid out here provides a really clear, transparent template. And when you reference the reset, I think maybe my next question, it's a just function of the reset, the reset year versus an ongoing issue. But when I looked through the board contract, the board cover memos for two of the contracts, the cover memo said that there were SMART goals, which are specific, measurable, achievable, relevant and time-bound. That those, those goals were incorporated into, into the contract in Exhibit A. What you went through the contract, the actual contract, that are hundreds of pages. The contract said the SMART goals are still being developed and won't be available to September 30th. And that's sort of a two-part, a two-part, a two-part question related to that. One, is that just a function of the reset, like going forward? They would actually be baked into any contract that the board approved. And then second, given that we're in a transition year, once those have been set, can those be shared with the board in October? Once they've been set since we're approving the contract without them in it?
So absolutely, we, we intend to share, share those as part of our ongoing work. What I would say is that the contracts as, as provided in both section, in both the section in terms of goals and activities, as well as our performance measures, they do have SMART goals and that they are, they are, they are measurable, they are time-bound. We're asking them to do that. In our, in the research, in the research and literature review that we did to inform the investment strategy, three indicators were found to be one of the, one of the, the most impactful in terms of increasing student performance for students of color. The first was the strategy themselves, right? So we have contractors that are reporting on the activities conducive to the strategy and how it aligns to the strategy. And so that is, that is something that they are currently reporting on and that they will report on quarterly. And you see that tracked in both their activities and the, the goals that are outlined. The second indicator was having that sort of demographic match of the, of the staff who are doing that. And so that is something that is also reported. You'll notice a section in the performance measures that says, that says staff demographics, as well as the FTE and the time spent. And then the third indicator was, as Dr. Brown, our chief of systems performance likes to say, the dosing, or basically the intensity of services. So we're asking folks to also tell us how often or how long are you going to be working with each student? So the document that you're requesting, the sort of shared outcome report, is in the past, we've had our partners, we've said, we'd like you to increase attendance. And so a certain percentage of the students attending your program will, will have 90% attendance. And so what we, functionally, the process was, is that our, our contractors would call Pamela, ask Pamela to produce a report that has the attendance. And then they would, they would receive that report from Pamela and then they would return that report to me. So what we're trying to do is to, is to have the district report out the actual outcomes. And so, so part of what the process that we're doing, and just today, we had a great meeting with Open School and the, the three high school principals. And we're doing this with all of our contractors, is that we are sort of everyone's, you know, across Zoom, looking each other in the eyes, saying sort of like, these are the performance measures. These are the goals. We're reviewing the scope of work very carefully. Russ is attending each of the, Dr. Brown, excuse me, is attending each of those meetings. And together we'll co-create that shared sort of outcome report. We don't have that for you tonight because of a couple of factors. We need to, after all the contracts are reported, be able to sort of go back and review and calibrate, sort of like what baseline will be. And there's a couple of factors around the baseline. So we don't have it for you, number one, because we're still negotiating all the contracts. So we want to make sure that this is a shared report. The second reason is that, and I think we talked about this in email, is that the, what's baseline is a little bit wonky this year, right? So, so there are a couple of factors outside of our control, such as timing of assessments, sort of attendance and sort of how that will be taken, that we want to make sure that we're spending a little bit more time before we establish that baseline. And then each, each, each group will be sort of aspiring towards more specific of sort of like what that percentage increase year by year. The one thing I would say is that we're in really good company. So the outcomes that we're reporting on are pretty shared by a lot of other funders who are doing similar work that we are. So Meyer Memorial Trust, the Children's Lobby, Multnomah County, we're all reporting on very similar, similar things. And so one of the things I'm really excited about, the way that we're looking at performance measures is that we're, we're wanting to make sure that we understand what the leverage is. So what FTE are we paying for? What FTE is Multnomah County paying for? Is Meyer Memorial Trust paying for? And how can, through the use of some common outcomes, can we really look across the, the whole array of funding that goes into supporting students and their learning? To make sure that we are aware of what, what impact we're, you know, sort of we're funding and what that looks like. So I'm really excited to have Dr. Brown and his big brain part of this. And I think we're, we're really close, but there are some, there are some procedural processes that we, that we need to go through to make sure that it's in alignment.
So just a clarifying question. So in the past, say, So in the past, say, an individual contractor would have been, I'm going to do these activities with this number of students at these schools, and we're going to increase the percentage of those students attending school at an 80% level, or pick some measurement. Are you saying now that those goals are going to be collective group goals, or you'd still have an individual contractor who would have like an attendance-based goal? So I'm just trying to understand if we've had a big shift to a collective goal that everybody's going to be accountable for? Or is it still going to be, like, Madison Roosevelt, with this cohort of students, we're going to be moving achievement? Or we're going to be trying to increase attendance, or some other measurement?
The goals have always been collective. So Contractor A was trying to get to the same sort of like shared outcomes that Contractor B was. What we're doing is sort of recalibrating what that baseline is to get more accurate, more accurate picture of what sort of realistic growth would be, what that sort of, in terms of a SMART goal, what that sort of attainable, but also stretch goal would be.
Thank you.
Director, or Chair Lowry, just to jump in really quickly. I actually just, I actually found some of the performance metrics in these contracts to be really rigorous, and I appreciate Danny's sort of explanation as I was going through, just looking at, you know, students served and hours per week and diversity of staff. I mean, these are output measures for sure, but they're output measures that are leading and consistent with our board goals. And sort of the explanation that we're hearing tonight about moving towards the shared outcomes is a really positive step as well. And this is something that's in process. You know, and in terms of the overall timing, I actually think we've hit this just right. There were three options for these contracts. One of them would have been an annual contract, which I think we did here, as Director Brim Edwards said, from the community and our partners, that that's really problematic. And I think governments that have dealt with community-based organizations know that that type of annual funding with the uncertainty makes it really hard for them to staff up, makes it hard for them to plan for the future. So I think a one-year contract would have been a mistake. The other option, you know, would have been a four-year contract, which would have been fine, but it doesn't allow for as much sort of checking in and accountability. So I think where district staff ended up with a one-year contract with extensions, if our contractors, if our partners are meeting goals, is exactly the right place to be, because it gives some of that long-term certainty. But it also allows staff to be checking in and really coming back, and again, holding folks accountable for achieving this. I will say, I've read a lot of government contracts, and I actually found the performance measures in these to be really solid and rigorous and pretty refreshing. So good job, and I look forward to the shared outcomes report once that's developed, and seeing how these efforts are actually moving towards our shared board goals. Thanks.
All right, it sounds like we're ready to consider these contracts. So I need a motion and a second to bring these three contracts forward as part of Resolution 6162A. Can I do that, Liz, or do we have to do 6167?
I think I would prefer 6167, but it's actually clear which ones you're voting on, and that's the most important piece, that it's the Open School, ERCO, and I Am Academy contracts.
Great. So we'll do 6167, ERCO, I Am Academy, and what school? Open, yeah. I think I called it the wrong thing earlier. Yes.
So moved.
Director Scott and Director Bailey. I think Director, Director Scott moved, and Director Bailey seconded. There's a lot going on. I don't know if my internet connection is bad, but Director, I heard Director Scott and Director Bailey on that one. All right.
Close enough.
Close enough. Sorry, everyone. All right, is there any further discussion on these? All right, we will now vote on 6166. All in favor, please affirm by saying yes.
6167.
6167. Ah, 6166 was the preschool one. All right, we're voting on 6167. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. All right, 6167 passes, seven to zero, with Student Representative Shu voting.
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. That has passed. And then I think we have one other final piece of business that I know about before we adjourn, Director Bailey.
Yes?
Yes. Let's see, I'm unmuted. Okay, good. So to close off the evening on, to me, a really exciting and positive note, it's really nice when you work hard and you get a little recognition for it. So I want to share with the public that our superintendent is getting some well-deserved recognition. Every year, the Hispanic Metropolitan Chamber celebrates the contributions of Latinos, both locally and nationally. And this year, they are honoring Superintendent Carrero with the Bravo Award for Educational Leadership. The award recognizes him for his work to improve the education for Portland's children. He'll receive the award during a celebration on September 10th. So Superintendent Bravo, well done. We are so glad you are here, leading us.
Thank you, Director Bailey. You can't tell that I'm blushing through the sunburn, but certainly, any credit or accolade is best situated with the team effort here. So we're always happy and glad for positive recognition. It beats the alternative, but thank you.
Felicidades. So we are now officially adjourning, and our next meeting will be September 8 at 6:00 PM. So see you back then on the 8th. Good night, everyone.
Night.